And we're pleased to assist you in this endeavor. And what we would like to do tonight is just walk you through what the process is going to be. So in order for a superintendent move on in the process. So, we have already developed the advertisement with the board criteria. And once I have everyone after the application closes, we'll examine which candidates don't meet the minimum criteria, which ones do meet the minimum criteria, and which ones exceed the criteria that the board has identified. What I will do is I'm going to use those criteria and the qualifications that you have determined as a board to determine what the profile of the right candidate is going to be for Vernon Township School District. And so this is way, it's not someone who is going to work out in, let's say, Hope Township, New Jersey necessarily, we're looking for Vernon Township. Community and staff input. The board has requested input sessions from the community, staff, and administration. This is a board decision, it's a very important board decision, but the board recognizes that the input that they receive from stakeholders will help them make the best decision. As such, on the 21st of May, we will be doing staff input sessions at three schools. We will visit me, we, it's almost like the royal we, I didn't mean that. I will meet with administration also on the 22nd. And what I'm really looking forward to as well is the community input session, which will happen at 7:00 PM on May the 21st. We'll be, we'll follow a pretty tight agenda, and it will help us to determine district strengths, district challenges, leadership styles, and criteria that's important to your stakeholders, important to your community as we go forward and identify the right hire. We've done the ad already, and it's on our website, and that, I'm not sure if I actually mentioned this to the, to the board in public, it's in your materials, but it goes to college and placement centers throughout the tri-state area, and also in other states, you know, Illinois, California, it's all over, and state school boards, all the state school board associations get your, your announcement as well. NJASA, NJPSA, and all the county superintendents' offices have a copy of our ad, it's on our website as I mentioned. And so far, there have been no other costs to the board. We were advertising on our website, we're getting a pretty good return rate, so, so far, so good. After the application date closes, I'll prepare two reports for the board. I will let you know what the input sessions are like, that's what that first bullet point is kind of detailing. And also, I will delineate what candidates you have received, what their, you know, exactly how many, how many are from out of state, how many have doctoral degrees, that sort of thing, okay? So that'll be, those will be two comprehensive reports, they can easily be posted on your website, they are not confidential information. Once I have the applications in hand, and even as they are coming in, we have our secretarial team working on it, which assures you complete confidentiality, and we will be maintaining a complete file on each individual candidate. I will become very familiar with these candidates and their files. And as attractive candidates come in, I will be interviewing them myself at first, and then we will decide, we already have the application that's tailored to the board's needs, I discussed it with the board, what they want on that application, and when people go to apply, what that application will look like, and what unique questions we are asking of the applicants who apply for the Vernon Township superintendent position. Once I meet with the board after I've screened the applications, we, I will come to you with pretty much applicant, applicants in three different categories. Those that do not meet your minimum criteria, we often get some of those, meets minimum criteria and exceeds the criteria. With the board, we will decide how we're going to interview everybody, we will establish dates, we will determine, since it's a full board process, the good dates that are good for the board, and what time, and what the interview will look like. I will also assist you in developing interview questions for the interviews that you will have with the candidates. Like I mentioned before, I will personally interview your first round candidates, and I will train the board in exact, in, in good interview procedures and, and practices. I will schedule those interviews myself, so you don't have to worry about it, nor does your vice president have to do, you give me the dates and I'll make it work. Another thing that we will do for boards is we will provide you with some contract information. We'll have someone from our labor relations department come to Vernon if you wish, and we'll discuss what other competitive salaries are like, what negotiated items are available to parse out. We can give you worksheets for costing out a contract, and we'll give you a sample draft contract, all of this could be of great use to you. You may not need all of these, but these are part of the services that we offer. And then, at the end of the day, once we've identified who you will be working with, and you have approved that person, and everyone has signed on the dotted lines, and we have our, our welcoming to the community and to the school district, I am more than pleased to facilitate a transition workshop for the board and your new superintendent. And that's very helpful to establish a strong relationship from the very start. We clarify expectations, and we get to know each other more, and it really is just, I know this, like I said, I know the slideshow isn't, isn't exciting, but it is an exciting process, and I'm very pleased to be a part of it. And I'm wondering if you have any questions, I know I've been working with you already, and I do appreciate, and I commend, the board's desire to have this in public session, so that your community and your stakeholders know what to expect going forward.
Is that your last slide?
That is my last slide.
Anybody from the board have any questions that they actually, that they would like to ask Kathleen? No? Does anybody from the public have any questions that they would like to ask Kathleen? If you don't want to talk in public here, as Kathleen said, there will be forums for teachers, staff, administration, and public as well, on those dates that she gave on the slides, so. There will be ample opportunity for the school district and the, and the community to have input on the hiring of new central school administrators, so. If nobody would like to say anything now, you'll have a couple of weeks to think of your questions, and you can ask Kathleen at that point in time, so.
Can you also please, if I get you and I are not
Yeah, Kathleen did mention that it's a full board process, obviously Lori and I will not be involved in that process.
That's true, because you are conflicted out of it, so as per, yes.
And that's, for those, Kathleen was talking to the board about the process in closed session, that's why Lori, Chuck, and I were out here, so.
We did a little bit more detail because, you know, with some information that belonged in executive, so.
No problem, no need, no need for us in the
But thank you very much for the opportunity, I really do appreciate.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right? I'll see you soon, thank you.
Yep. Next on the agenda is health insurance proposal update, Steve and Lisa Lance.
Yes.
From ELES.
Again, some of the board members have not met them. This is Steve Lance, Lisa in the back.
Are you going to be using this at all, Steve?
No, no, I'm not.
You got to be careful.
I'm going to try and not ruin the technology, so.
These are our brokers, and I wanted to invite them, they've come, I think for the past few years, at least once a year. This is a good time to come, because as a reminder to the board, the latest proposal that we did get from Horizon was a 4% increase. So, that's what we built into the budget, a 4% increase. Since that time, they shop around to get competitive quotes, and Steve, I'll let you take it from there.
The, you know, getting competitive quotes, we do this every year, go out to the carriers. You have a couple of unique benefits in your package that some other carriers can't accommodate, and in this industry, in this particular marketplace, the carriers are required to provide a letter that says they guarantee to at least meet or beat the benefits that are, they're replacing. And so, if they can't do that, they can't provide the letter, and basically, they do in, you know, do not quote, or will not quote. So we went out to Cigna, United Healthcare, Aetna, and AmeriHealth. Cigna and United Healthcare did a no quote, Aetna and AmeriHealth quoted, and they had competitive quotes, so that and a much improved experience picture. It has improved dramatically, and it's great to see. And to get to the bottom line, we got Horizon to agree to no increase on the medical, no increase on the RX. The dental has a minus 5.02, and you're in the second year of a rate guarantee for vision, so that's a no, a no increase there. So it's a, you know, a minus decrease when you throw them all together. And I have to tell you, in my career of 30-plus years in this business, I never got to deliver a renewal like this before. And I'm hoping, my experience says, you know, the, the claims run and ebb and flows, and your group's 100% credible, so you're, that's what's really going to drive it. And it's, I'm, I'm happy to see that that picture has changed, and it looks like it's, it's continuing. So, you know, you'll be able to see it, Steve, with the info we provide you every month on the loss ratios and stuff like that.
I, I was asked to be brief, and I think
The loss ratio, if you remember when I presented the budget, the, there's two numbers that we look at. We look at how much we pay Horizon every month, it's the same amount, versus how much Horizon pays out to our doctors. And if they're not paying as much to our doctors from one year to the next, then that's what generates your experience rate, so.
Yeah.
The two other firms that were able to say they could offer comparable services?
Aetna and AmeriHealth.
What were their rates compared to your?
Their, their rates, they had taken, and this is very typical when you have someone competing to get the business, they're going to be as aggressive as they can.
Sure.
Feeling quite sure that after the first year, if they have to come back with an increase, making another move a year later, you're probably not going to want to do that, and, you know, they'll, so they like to, they were, they were down, they were, one was 6% off of the initial renewal, and the other one was 7% off. So they would be another 2% or 3% below.
Zero.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is another quarter million, I guess.
Potentially, yes. The, when I budgeted 4%, if, if the board goes with zero, both Steve and I agree, he's, he knows the formula a whole lot better than me, but my quick math was about $400,000 savings within the budget. Money we budgeted, because we had to approve a budget before we knew what the rates would be, money we did budget that likely we won't be spending on, certainly on health insurance, so. So that's 4%. So if it's another 2% below that, yes, it's maybe another 200,000.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Does the, does the state plan have anything that's comparable to what Blue Cross Blue Shield has, or not, or Horizon?
The state plan has set plan designs, and as, as we're looking at that, in the, it was sometime in the last year, you know, in, in looking at those plan options, yes, they have options that they can build. Interestingly, I had to get creative with them, because I asked them to just give me these plan designs, so to match it. No, we can't do that, that's a state plan, but you have this, okay, give me the different, you know, the, the different benefits in pieces, and let me build my own plan out of the one that you have now. So, I, I, as I recall, they were competitive, but, you know, there, there are some differences. I mean, there's, you know, there's outside of a, maybe a handful of plans left in the state, you know, the, the co-pay reimbursement under the medical plan for the RX reimbursement is an unusual benefit these days. And that's, that's the one that some of the carriers go, you know, we don't, we don't administer that anymore.
And do we offer as a school district plans that are of less quality, I guess, the, less beneficial than the direct access plan?
Yes.
Where since the teachers are now paying a portion of their salary to benefits, and the less premium that we are charged, obviously the less premium they have to pay.
Yes.
So is that an, is that an option for teachers who are seeking to save some money?
There are actually two options that way. One is the Omni plan, which is using a smaller network where they're driving deeper discounts because it's a smaller network. There are some participants in the Omni plan now, and it's been pretty steady since it was rolled out. In the EPO plan, think of the EPO like an HMO, where you have no out-of-network benefits, but you would have the benefit of Horizon's network in New Jersey, and then their blue-card network outside of New Jersey. So those would be, you know, the, the direct access plan, the Omni plan, and then the EPO plan.
Karen, do you remember, Karen Dowd administers our health benefits for the district? How many are in the, the Omni plan, do you remember?
Sixteen, I think.
About seventeen.
Seventeen.
Okay. The first year we rolled out a secondary plan, we literally had zero. The first year we rolled out a secondary plan, we literally had zero people take that secondary plan. So 17 might not seem like a lot, but to me it's significant. And those people will see the savings in their share of the contributions that go back towards the board.
And does, does E L E S come in and do, or does Horizon come in and do presentations to our staff and demonstrate to them what the benefit packages are, what the premiums are, and what the savings they have that they can garner by going to another plan?
We have, we have done that. When the Omni was rolled out, we had the Horizon rep in, and I remember it was done at maybe the high school auditoriums. And then for the EPO, I know we had talked to a representative, I think it was a representative group.
Right.
And, and, you know, went through the benefits that way with it. And we did it on that basis, yeah. It, it, yes.
Also, I do occasionally throughout the year, I will provide our employees with all the necessary information that they need. I will send benefits summaries if they need that twice a year to send out the information about the prescription program, trying to keep everybody, you know, up to date in that, that sort of thing.
And one thing Horizon does offer, what do we, the monthly...
Summaries of benefits?
Nope.
Broker briefs?
Yes, the broker briefs, thank you, yes. Which is an educational piece on staying healthy. You might get that in the mail.
Can we pass that on to board members?
We certainly can, yes.
A year ago, you know, we invited you as part of the negotiating committee to... You met with us a few times, and there were some prices given and reductions given that were part of the contract that was just ratified here.
Yes.
So year one was, was gone because all the negotiations took place.
Correct.
Starting year two and then in year three, the lessing of the benefits was a savings of $469,000 to us. So that didn't take place in year one, it's going to take place in year two coming in. Are you saying that that's the 469, and you're now saying it's 400? Or is it 469 plus 400?
We've not discussed that impact of the negotiations.
Right, there's two, good, there's two layers of a decrease, or not a de, of a savings. The 0% we're talking about is on today's plan where we haven't done anything, any changes yet. Steve and Lisa are now working with Horizon to implement those decreases that we agree with the Education Association for July 1. So zero, meaning zero increase, is on a plan with all the same level of benefits. So those rates, so in theory, when Karen Dowd gets the bill, it's going to be a decrease because we will implement those decrements, and it'll decrease. But I took that into consideration when I built the budget.
Right.
I did decrease that in the, I lessed the amount to budget in anticipation of an agreement.
Right, okay.
So there's a bit of a mismatch.
Okay.
It's a good question.
Anything else? Anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll open it to public for public participation. Limited to items on the work session agenda or any student comments. Serge, if you'd just state your name for us.
Christian Fieldhouse. I'm from the Lake Panorama section of Vernon. In speaking to the board today, I want to ensure that students have a voice, and I just ask you to realize that there are a lot of kids in the school that rely on the service of after-school bussing. And although the board has struck the 3:15 to 5:30 stipends from the agenda, I find it to be of importance that there is public discourse on this matter. Personally, my mother is a single mother that works in Moorestown. My father passed away over six years ago, and I believe that there are a lot of kids in my situation where their parents work too far away to pick them up if they have to stay after school. And if there's an absence of after-school bussing, then kids that want to stay after for after-school help or after-school activities will have to stay an extra two hours from which they'd have to usually be at school. And this adds up to 10 and a half hours at the school. This almost creates a class system of after-school help where kids who are fortunate enough to have transportation can get after-school help, but kids who are less fortunate and rely on the service of after-school bussing will be effectively unable to get the help they need or participate in after-school activities. We should be fostering extracurriculars, not making it harder to partake in them. This is an unnecessary stress on parents and kids, the idea that we should remove after-school bussing. Recently, I've, I've thought to myself that the crowds gathering in the, in the, by the main doors of the school have been some of the biggest after-school crowds of kids I've ever seen in the two and a half years I've been at Vernon Township High School. I'm not really sure what, how much gain there is to be had from cutting after-school buses in comparison to the loss that would happen in the educational value that staying after school provides for students. Many students have, that I've talked to, have been asking me how they are going to be able to stay after school next year. How are they going to be participating in their clubs? How are they going to be getting after-school help? And I don't have an answer for them. I'm going to be a senior. I might be able to drive. But there are going to be kids that are a year younger than me, two years younger than me, that don't have that opportunity to drive. And they rely on these 3:30 buses, or else they have to stay till 5:30, where they have, no teachers stay until 5:30. No clubs are really going to 5:30, they're going to 3:30. After-school help is going till 3:30. Detention goes till 3:30. But if we take away these buses, what are these kids going to do? Are they just going to go home at 2 o'clock and not participate? Or should we help them try to get the bussing, the transportation they need? I think that the board ought to realize that the reaction to this idea has been overwhelmingly negative. Parents don't know how to address the situation without going out of their way. They can't just leave work early. They can't get a closer job to the school. We, we all need, rely on this after-school bus. And I would just like the board to know how much it would be a disservice to the students if this service was removed.
Mr. Fieldhouse, correct?
Yes.
First of all, I congratulate you on a very well-thought-out, impromptu speech, not written down, off the cuff, excellent job. Because of your speech, we are going to put these buses back in on Tuesdays and Thursdays over the next year. Over that next year, we are going to get some hard data as to how many kids are actually using us. As a board, we have received differences of numbers from different people, from whether it be students, faculty, community members, whatever it may be. So we've decided that we're going to go ahead and put the buses back in on Tuesdays and Thursdays. This should maybe concentrate the activities to two days, and maybe we'll increase the population of those students on those buses.
While I do appreciate that change, there might be some issues in the crossing over of kids and after-school activities on those two days. The, giving that extra third day gives a lot of, more flexibility to these after-school clubs so kids can participate in multiple activities without missing meetings and having lessened attendance at the things they want to be at. But I, I do thank you for, for listening to what I had to say.
And that, and that last comment you just made is going to be part of the data also.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. You can come up to the mic anytime you want.
Well spoken.
Thank you.
Well spoken.
Anybody else have anything, agenda item? Okay.
Personnel.
What's it relate to on the agenda?
It says personnel report.
Yeah, but that's a report on numbers. What, what's it? How long is it going to be?
Five minutes. This is while she's kind to me.
Okay.
Right?
I know.
Davis, Davis too, so there's no conflict.
I'm giving a two-minute warning.
I know, I had a two-minute warning, yes. Allison Gilfoyle, I'm a speech and language therapist employed here, and I'm assigned to Glen Meadow in the high school. And I think when I started, I don't know, Mulletz may have still been involved. So I've been here for a very long time. I just wanted to note that I so approve of the decision that was made when Mr. Di Benedetto was reappointed as the director for 90 days. And I think it's important that B O, Board of Ed members, are cognizant of the numerous employees and residents who support him and wish him to remain as the director. So I appointed myself to the task of communicating this to you. I have a packet for each of you with several dozen letters written by parents, administrators, teachers, related service personnel, that's me, OTs and PTs, several CST members, non-certified staff, a recently retired employee, and coordinator of a local committee that serves our students. I know that each of you lead extremely busy lives, but I'm going to make two requests. I'm going to request that you read the letters meticulously. As a communication person, I'm asking that you listen to the words and the intent of the letters. And if you truly listen, I think you will understand the message because they're written by those of us, so to speak, in the trenches who have worked with Art. I'm going to say Art instead of Di Benedetto to save time. With students, parents, administrators, and our colleagues, of course. And we've seen positive transformations. On the outside of the packet, I listed, kind of encapsulated, some of the positive statements that were made on his behalf. So in our opinion, it seems illogical to seek a replacement, so I would respectfully request that he remain the director. If Mr. Di Benedetto, this is what is confusing to me, is competent to serve for 90 days. I'm not sure why he just could not continue in that position. It just doesn't make sense to me. Some of the comments on this you'll see in the letters. Earnest dedication, tireless work ethic, inspiring, generous, and original, collaborative and approachable, caring, supportive, available, student-parent advocate. Put students first, thank you, not politics. And I was thinking that perhaps when the new superintendent arrives, I hope that he or she prioritizes all of our students, including our specialized students. And wouldn't the newest member of your administrative team welcome someone to sit at the table with them, or her, who has 40 years of experience in special education? I think the new superintendent, I'm sure he'll choose someone with integrity, would not be impacted by working alongside a previous superintendent if in fact we focus first and foremost on students and not politics. Where am I?
Men 13.
Okay. So last time I spoke about two of my Glen Meadow students. I'm just going to address one of my high school students, whoops. And I did call the parent last night and ask permission. I won't be using her name, but she knows I'm talking about her tonight. And about a year and a half ago, she was struggling to pass the ASFAB, which is the military exam, her dream. And in fact, in her senior year, she spoke at a Dare to Dream conference. The topic of her keynote address was her dream and goals to be in the U.S. Army. Now, she was a student athlete, she worked, so the only time available was on the weekends. And with parent permission and Mr. Di Benedetto's permission, we were able to work on Saturday when the high school was open. And she drove, so she also came to Warwick High School. Fast forward, she is now in Fort Leonard Wood in Missouri, going through boot camp. And they're allowed no communication, we just write letters, the old-fashioned way. But on Sunday...
That's your timer.
She's going to have 20 seconds?
Go.
Pardon?
Go.
On Sunday was her first phone call. She called to tell me that they just came back from their first mission, which was crawling along the ground under live ammo. She passed her throwing of the live grenade test. And she will graduate on June 15th before she goes to Hawaii and then is deployed to Korea. And the last thing she said to me on the phone was, Ms. Gilfoyle, don't forget. Tell Mr. Di Benedetto I said thank you for helping me reach my dream. So I'm hoping you remember that when you make some decisions. Thank you, thank you, timer.
Allison, thank you for those kind words.
And may I?
You can give, you can give this to Steve, and you can give it to Steve, and Steve can destroy him.
Oh, great.
Mr. Di Benedetto actually called me yesterday and kind of let me know that this may be happening. So he did tell me why he appreciates the, the effort and support, that he doesn't think it's fair for a new superintendent to come in and have the former superintendent still in the position as a director. So he informed me he will not be applying for the position.
You got it.
And since he resigned from both positions, he would have to reply, reapply for the position. He has no desire to do that. So, thank you very much.
Well, I just wanted you to know what he's done for...
That's fine, that's fine.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything they would like to address? Hearing nothing, I'll close it to the public. Review of public meeting agenda. Does anybody have anything that they would like to have clarified on the agenda for next week? Anybody have anything? No? If you have anything that pops up between now and next Thursday, please ask Dr. McKay or Mr. Kepnis for clarity on that. Dr. McKay?
Sure.
You're on board.
First of all, I'd like to thank Allison for those kind words.
It was easy, it was all just true.
Mm-hmm. Fantastic. Just a couple of updates for the board so that we are all in the know. Qualtrics is now set. Dr. Peak will be one of the contact people along with Steve Kepnis, and we'll get started with that process pretty much right away. We have a webinar set up with them for next week, I believe.
On Friday.
Yep, and, and we will keep the board apprised as we move forward.
Can I just add a comment to that?
Sure.
Since we talked to, we were talking a little bit, right?
Mm-hmm.
And so, Dr. Peak, the only thing I'd like to recommend is that when you're doing the survey and you're gathering data, that part of what we collect is what school the participant is working at so that we can look at the data across not only the district, but individual schools.
At your seat, I've had this in my section, but we're in this now. So I did put a copy of the survey that I received from Dr. Peak, so you can review the questions.
So this is, I thought this was the grant. This is what the survey is? Okay.
The, I mean, I, I don't know if we're out of order or not, but the committee decided to use that for a basis. And we have it up on Google Docs. The committee members are editing it. It's not quite ready yet, so we'll probably have to have a meeting between now and when we officially approve the, the survey questions. But it is being...
So this is the Rutgers survey, and we're going to use the Rutgers survey from the grant as a baseline for Qualtrics?
No, they're, they're two separate things. So the grant is, is something totally separate. So this is the school climate survey that we were charged with back in January.
And that's what this is?
That's what that is.
So the Rutgers grant is different for the...
The, the...
Yes.
The state grant is something different.
State grant is different, yes.
All right. And that's going to be a totally different set of questions? Do we get to look at those first?
We have to look at those before.
We have to look at those before we send those out.
All right. Are we gonna wind up with survey fatigue between the two?
We don't have an open for the grant.
Well, that-
We don't even know what happened.
We don't know if we have the grant.
Okay.
So if the grant doesn't come through, this has to happen.
Mm-hmm.
And of course, as I said last week, Scott Wallach put out the climate survey, which is required by law. So that was out to our parents as well. So that was released last week.
And that was high school only, though, right?
Yes, it was.
It was high school only.
Mm-hmm.
There was some feedback from the community about that.
And-
So, so-
Are you also gonna indicate how long they've been with the district? Cause that would be the other piece of information.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we could certainly add that, but just so, I mean, I'll give you a feel for some of the suggestions that I've made. Is that, you'll notice that it's broken up into sections.
Mm-hmm.
And so I did, you know, Qualtrics is a, is a method where we can create our own survey. So we can take that survey, and there's no copyright. The state allows it for any district to use. We just can't say that this came, you know, if we modify it, we can't trace it back to the state. So on some of the comments that we've been working on, I've added, you know, which school you're from. And then at the end of every section, I hope to add, if we approve it, a comment box. So please comment on any aspect of the questions that you answered in this section, something to that effect. And then at the very end, again, you know, there is sort of survey fatigue, and we're not professional survey designers. I would propose that we add a section at the end to ask a handful of questions that relate to district goals and strategic plans. So that's kind of what we're working towards. But obviously, the full board would have input before we send it out.
Will the same survey go to students, parents, faculty?
No, this is, yeah, this is just faculty, staff.
No. This is just faculty stuff.
Yep. Yeah, so I put something in there too. Are you a teacher, an administrator, or, you know, a staff member?
Oh, I see, it's a school staff.
Mm-hmm.
So you sort of get that.
To qualify it, right?
Right, right.
And if teachers, if teachers work in two schools, they have a home building, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so they would pick their own building.
I can see right now, it's like, well, which school do I go to?
Yeah, I mean, and-
Yes, specify home, home building.
I think your home, home building.
Yeah. And you can, I'm sure you can check all that applied.
That's right.
Yeah, you could, yeah, you could, you could do that.
Which school do you work in, you know, have multiple boxes?
I think if we ask how many years they've been in the district, at this point, we've asked which building.
Right.
Then we're asking what, and if they're in two buildings, I think you might do some anonymity, and you might not wanna do that because then-
Narrow it down. Right, that's true.
I think I would just pick a primary building.
Yeah, and not ask how long they've been in the district, just because I think that would be, that would narrow it down too much, and people would feel like they, they wouldn't be anonymous any longer.
Okay. Anybody have anything else on Qualtrics for Dr. Peak while we're on it?
And so this is going out when?
When we approve it.
When we approve it.
So we're hoping to have the feedback back for the summer work session, so that we can start working on hours, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe.
So you're gonna go back and edit the questions now, and then do you think we're gonna be able to next week have-
Ah, if I can get everybody together.
Before the end of the school year? All right. Because if we don't do this before the end of the school year, we really can't do it over the summer, cause you can't guarantee participation.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we have to go now.
No.
So then it would have to be September.
All those snow days are finally paying off in one way.
It's, well, actually, I think it's certainly an ideal time, at the end of the school year. I think it's an ideal time.
Yeah, when things are winding down a little bit.
And while people may be frustrated and tired, that's the time that we wanna hear their honest opinions, so that would be great, if we can do it.
It's got the real filter.
Thanks, Dr. Peak. I really appreciate all the effort on that.
Thank you.
I also appreciate our staff. We went through transfers, which we traditionally do on Tuesday of this week. We have twenty-four transfers for approval tonight. We don't usually approve items at the work session, but I would like to get that done this evening. And again, I would like to thank the staff and the union. Liz came around with me, and thank the staff for their flexibility and their understanding. This is a difficult time for anybody who's transferred.
Chuck, do you happen to have, and if not for next week, the anticipated number of homerooms and anticipated class size for like K through three next year?
Yes. I can bring that next week. K through three, homerooms. Yep.
Thank you. Homerooms and anticipated class sizes.
Yep. We do know what kindergarten looks like right now, with about a hundred and fifty-six students. Truth of the matter is, that's usually where we're sitting about this time of year. By the time we get to September, it's two hundred. So that usually means ten class sizes, and that usually starts the process of ten, ten, ten. But I will get you the specifics as we move forward.
Yeah, cause based on the transfers, it looks like we might be one less first grade next year. But it's hard to tell, just speculating.
No, it's, yeah, I would think that there may be some hiring done at that level.
Okay.
But again, that will be indicated by kindergarten numbers. All right, our RDT policy. I wanna thank Laura and Lori and Justin and Natalie for their hard work on Monday evening to review the policy. It has been rewritten or adjusted. I don't know what we wanna call it. What would you say, committee?
Revised, revised.
Revised.
Revised, okay. And then reviewed by our attorney. So I thought I'd just open it up to, for a little bit of discussion of what changes you thought were necessary, and the agreements or where you think we are.
So, should I be giving?
Yeah, you got, the committee should probably start.
Yes, right, okay. Well, the committee met last week with a number of stakeholders from the school district.
Yep.
Thank you to Dr. McKay for putting that together so quickly to get the ball rolling. Administrators, teachers, advisors, professionals that deal with the drug and substance abuse issues within the district, were all around one table, and we really got some very good feedback from that meeting. The board members on that committee, Lauren, Lauren, Lori, Natalie, and myself then met again, as Dr. McKay indicated, and took a lot of the feedback that we got and made some substantive changes that we would like to propose to the board. Any of the changes that are here in the policy in front of you tonight are in bold. And I believe-
It was at your table when you sat down. It wasn't in your packet. So it might be at the bottom of your-
Oh, there it is, okay.
I believe that we, as a committee of board members, were able to find some common ground on areas, and we think that we can improve the policy and make it more clear. So the bulk of the changes related to consequences of a confirmed positive, and what the committee decided based upon the feedback to propose to the board was that for a first confirmed positive, the participant will have a minimum of six visits with the school, student assistant counselor. That student would remain in their activities. They would, for the student's safety and the safety of others, have their parking permit revoked for the duration of the time that they're in the treatment program. They would also have to attend an early intervention program. If there was a second confirmed positive, the student would have to go through a treatment program and counseling with a student assistant counselor. At that point in time, the student would have a removal from their activities for thirty days, thirty calendar days. And then if there was a third or subsequent confirmed positives, the consequences do become more severe, and you're looking at a year-long removal. This was a modification from our current regulation of this policy. Because as it stood now, a student with the first confirmed positive would be removed from thirty days. There were some stakeholders at the high school. We had mixed opinions when we sat at that table. We had a variety of viewpoints. But there were stakeholders at the high school, administrative and those that work with our students with substance and drug abuse issues, that felt that it wasn't necessary at that point in time to isolate these students from what they view as a support network and what they view as an opportunity to remain in school and remain engaged in the school community. They felt that in order to rehabilitate the student and focus on decreasing the drug and substance abuse issues, their best fighting chance was to still have them involved in the school community at that point in time. Other than the changes to the consequences, we also changed, there were a number of times where it said co-curricular activities students would be removed from. We changed it to say extracurricular activities, because co-curricular would indicate that it was tied to a academic class of some sort, or a, an elective class of some sort. And we didn't feel that the policy should be removing students from any involvement tied to their course load. Were there other changes that-
The last piece of this that's been added is the policy review, that's new to the policy. And that, we took that language, we borrowed it from our substance abuse policy, which just says that the board would like to review this policy annually as a board, and solicit input from parents, guardians, students, the community, as well as the key stakeholders in the schools. Security coordinator, principals, coaches, people involved in the treatment rehabilitation of our students. I think that that annual review will be as helpful as the meeting was that we had last week with all the stakeholders. It was truly informative and kind of eye-opening about the range of opinions, but also the ability to find common ground. I mean, I think that we thought we were coming to this from, you know, very, very far places, but actually, we were looking for kind of the same solution, right?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
A solution that worked for the students in the district that, you know, that helped put them on a path towards rehabilitation.
And I would echo that as well, and I think, you know, one of the other big things that came out, right? Because I'm definitely somebody who was very strong on consequences and define consequences upfront. And, you know, as we, as we talked, there were a lot of differing opinions at that table, but as we talked, it became more obvious that there were certain things with those consequences initially that had a negative impact, such as, you know, wrongful shaming of a student, right? We, you know, the law doesn't allow us to shame adults. We shouldn't be able to shame students. And by removing them from an activity, it becomes very obvious to everybody around that, you know, it's not for academic reasons, it's for other reasons. And, you know, so we didn't want the unnecessary shaming piece. And then I think it also became, I already know how caring our staff is with our students, but I think it became even more apparent how much the staff really wants to engage with these students to be able to provide a support network for them.
Yeah.
So that was the other thing I did wanna bring attention to, and that was, you know, as part of that first confirmed positive, the state law is very clear on what we can and can't do for, quote, consequences, right? And that was also part of the co-curricular, right? We're not allowed to remove them from co-curricular, only extracurricular. But we also felt that it would benefit the students, and Ms. Cruz and Dr. Anderson all talked about creating this support network. So we can't require it, cause the state law doesn't allow us to require it. But we did highly recommend that as part of that first counseling and that first evaluation, that we form that support group, as long as the parent and the student are willing to do that as part of, you know, moving forward through the program, and to give them that support network within the school system.
Yeah. Something else to point out in regards to the changes that we're proposing here is the committee was very cognizant of how highly regulated of a topic this was. And Lori always kept bringing us back to making sure that we're in line with the state regulation around it. And these changes have been approved or reviewed rather by the board's attorney to ensure that we're compliant with state regulation on the matter.
Mm-hmm.
Question, the, at the end of the new section, it says records of a positive test will be carried over each year. District will maintain records until the student is no longer attending. So does that mean that if they have a positive test freshman year and then a positive test senior year, does that count as a second confirmed positive?
Yes.
Yeah.
It does.
It does.
Okay.
Yes. You know, and we felt that that was important. I think we talked about that as a board, right? The idea is to identify students that are at risk and get them the help they need.
Cause that's significant.
Cause that's significant, right?
Yeah, because the chances of them being chosen twice in a school year randomly is pretty much zero.
It's minimal. Yeah.
So you're not gonna get a second or third confirmed in most cases in the same year, or even maybe in two years.
No, right.
And to understand-
That shows a pattern.
Yeah, it does show a pattern. And to, you know, just to clarify that, Dave, that record does not move with the student. So should the student graduate or leave our district, transfer, that record is done, right? It's destroyed, it's done.
Transfer. Yeah.
You know, but, but yeah, it was important to be able to identify subsequent offenses. And the state does not allow you to, you know, we had talked about, you know, do you take a student that failed the first test, and do you require them then to test for an extended period of time?
That was my second question.
You're not allowed to, legally you're not allowed to.
On the second, but on the second and third offense, they have to test negative in order to resume.
Survive at once, yeah.
But on the first confirmed positive, there's no retest required. Was there consideration to give an retest?
I believe there's a retest within the early intervention program.
Within the early intervention.
Yeah.
Oh, that's part of the early.
Yes.
If I'm understanding that correctly.
We don't require it in our policy, but they're being retested typically when they go for their appointments, they're being retested.
Yeah.
It's part of that program.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Couple of questions I have. The participants shall have a minimum of six visits with a student assistant counselor, one of which must occur within a week immediately following the confirmed positive test. So they can go to that one meeting within the first week, when, I mean, there's no deadline as to when they have to finish these meetings.
Well, at that first meeting, then the SAC defines what the program looks like. And they have to follow that defined program, or they're out of compliance, and then they're subject to-
Okay, that brings me to my next question. Who actually owns this policy? Who's the one that's gonna take this policy and is gonna be the person that's gonna oversee it, run it?
And that's defined in the very first page. The principal and security coordinator, coordinate and supervise.
But it's- It can't be two. It has to be one person owns it.
It doesn't today.
That's my point. Nobody owns the policy today.
So why does, why does one person have to own it?
Because if you have two people doing it, one's gonna assume one's doing the other, and you have nobody to go to. You have two people to go to, and there's gonna be one of these things going on.
And what happens in the one person's absence?
How often is, how often is that one person gonna be absent for an extended period of time?
It, I mean, it's your policy, so you need to elect for it.
I mean, we can't go, we can't go without a principal. We just went with that one for a couple of days, and we had an acting principal in there. So that person would, I know, a security coordinator, I think if the security coordinator's out, we're gonna have somebody in that position. So then that person would own it.
Well, the original policy said the principal or his/her designated.
Designee.
So instead of and, perhaps it should say or.
Principal or security.
Or if it's, or if the, the principal has designated someone else.
The principal or they're designated.
Would you feel more comfortable if it said the principal or?
I just think, I think it just should be, it, the, this is the principal's policy to oversee.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I mean, I just, that per, that, then the principal's gonna be in charge of going to the SAC, asking if the person is following through on their meetings. If they have a second po, a second confirmed positive, then that person's gonna be going to the coaches, make sure the person's not participating in sports, so on and so forth.
Or at least, or put it that the principal will coordinate, supervise, blah, 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 with help from or in conjunction with the security coordinator.
Right.
SAC.
Something that keeps the security coordinator in there.
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay.
Right, absolutely.
But the accountability rests solely with the principal.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Dr. Anderson and Mr. Wallach are totally committed, as you saw in that meeting, and I think that they would welcome that.
Mm-hmm, yes, they are.
Yeah, I mean, there's no doubt that Scott is, but at the end of the day, accountability has to rest with someone.
Oh, absolutely, it's just- You know, we've had, we've had instances very recently that were brought up at a meeting that there's kids that are on the ARL list that are still doing things.
Mm-hmm.
Nobody owns that list either, so, you know, everything is left up to the advisor or the coach or wherever they are. It can't be, it has to fall on one person's shoulders.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks for the committee for your hard work, and staff members as well.
Yes, absolutely.
So next step for this will be first reading?
First reading for the changes, right?
We can have that tonight if we want.
You can have the first reading tonight if you choose to. And then we got the second reading next week.
With the changes.
Is everybody comfortable? Is that enough time for everybody to look through and digest it?
Why don't you put it in a format of the policy? Let's put the first reading on the public meeting agenda.
This is your regulation.
Right.
This is the regulation, yes.
Yep.
So if we, if you want, we can put it in our format, our header, footer, and you can have your first reading either now or next week.
And we'll give people a week to-
Yeah.
Give people a week to digest it.
So first reading on the public.
So next meeting.
Yep.
And we'll make that adjustment to the opening and the verbiage.
Mm-hmm, yep. I just wanna say publicly that it was great working with the staff, the various people from the coalition, Scott Bergy, Mr. Taylor, we had a student there as well. And then, of course, our four dedicated members of the committee from the Board of Ed who took time off from work. I cannot say enough about how great everybody felt about each other. Real bridge-building afternoon.
Right, and not to- Right, and so not to, you know, continue talking about it, but just to emphasize that it wasn't an echo chamber, but it was still a very collaborative, very productive meeting, even though we had various viewpoints at the table.
Absolutely. All right, moving on to a- another piece. Um, I'm going to recommend this evening for a stipend for our GATE program. To piggyback on, on what you were just saying, Mr. Sparta, uh, we need someone to run this. We have a group of people who are dedicated and committed to it, but we need a, a single person that can make sure that things get done and overseen. We're adding a lot of responsibility into the GATE program, including parent conferences, including, uh, programs for our folks and adjusting things. And so therefore I would like to recommend, but I'll, I'll make that recommendation in a minute, for a stipend of five thousand dollars. I just wanted to answer any questions that people might have about that.
Is there a written description of what this person would be doing or is there guidelines or is it just?
Yeah, I would, I will write that up, but the, I will write that up in the posting. And what we really need someone to do is to be after school, making sure that the programs are set up for various days, Mr. Higgins, but also making sure that parent contacts are made, making sure that, um, programs are followed, and then setting up, um, reviews of those programs throughout the year, which is a lot of work to make sure that, uh, these things are being followed.
Can I just ask a question about that?
Sure.
Um, you said for them to stay after school to set things up for the next day.
Mm-hmm. No, not, not as much for setting up programs for the next day, but setting up meetings with parents and setting up, um, discussions between some of the different people that are involved in the program.
Oh, so like the administration aspect of it? Oh, okay.
Absolutely, absolutely. One of the big things is making the connection between the program and the administrators in the building. And I'm not saying it's anyone's fault, the administrators are doing a terrific job, but we just need more of that connection.
Gotcha. Cause when it's, I would have just thought that was part of the job, but now I understand what you're saying, setting up for the next day. Okay.
This would be one person, all grades, all schools?
It'd be one person, K through six.
K through six. What about seven through twelve?
Seven through twelve, we start to differentiate with the programs and GATE is a triangle in which they start to see it in their classrooms. We will build GATE towards other grade levels, but at this point it's cases.
And the recommendation is just to create the stipend, not a person to make it?
No, just the stipend. Okay, so I'll get to that in a minute. I just wanted everybody to be aware of the, um, summer work postings that I'm going to put on the public meeting agenda. We have a curriculum issue. It's not with us, it's with the state. The state has demarcated our Q SAC evaluation for next year for all schools, stating that when they look at the curriculum piece, after they put, look at our, our scores from, um, the PARC assessment, what they want to see is they want to see a differentiation in our curriculum for all sorts of subgroups. So in other words, it's not just good enough to put out our curriculum for second grade reading. Instead, they want second grade reading for special ed students, spec- special ed reading for gifted and talented students, special ed, uh, reading for students who are troubling with decoding. In other words, they want us to start to develop in our curriculum far more detailed plans for differentiation in the classroom. This is a lot of work.
Wait, where is that coming from?
That's coming from the state. It's from the ESSA, uh, a piece. So, uh, Steve Goldman, who's been, uh, I was in touch with last Friday, said, there's a way to do this. And what we're going to do is we need to get our curriculum people in, work with them and show them what the model will look like. So this summer, I'm going to have to bring people in to do curriculum. So I just wanted you to be aware that I'm going to bring that to the board as a posting for curriculum positions next Thursday so that you can vote on that. And then if you approve those positions, we will then put them out, people will apply for them, and we'll get approval in June, and then they'll be doing curriculum work over the summertime. Now, the way curriculum work in the summertime works is we pay people a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day to do curriculum work. So I just wanted you to be aware that there is a, um, a big piece coming from Q SAC.
Right, and when you bring that to us for approval, do you set the number of days?
Yes, so you'll know exactly what it will cost. And there's always the caveat that we may not use all of these, but this is what's set up. And then we give that to Sue Wallach, who's our payout, and she, and we make sure that the people are signing in and getting their work done. And that would be overseen by our supervisors and principals. Okay?
Will there then be like metrics attached to that where we're, we're obligated to meet? I don't know, there's some sort of assessment that assesses those different tiers of instruction that have then been differentiated? That we have to prove that we're differentiating, the students are benefiting and so on and so forth?
That is a terrific question. That is a terrific question. The metrics that they would have to set up in order to do that would then be placed on the responsibility of our observations. I have not seen anything from ESSA showing that our observations or our evaluation system will look any different. However, at the last day, June twenty-ninth, all of the administrators will get together for the Strong Plus training. We have it one day a year. Usually when the state is about to release something, they release it to Strong Plus and they release it to the other groups that do evaluations, like, um, you know, the d- the different organizations, there's six different ones. So we will know by June twenty-ninth whether they've changed the metrics on how they're going to observe this. The truth of the matter is, for Q SAC, you have to present to them in a day-long or two-day-long session in which you go through the process and show them how it's now in the curriculum. And then it's up to the person who's running the schools to make sure that that gets rolled out to the teachers. So the best way to do that is to have the teachers involved in the actual curriculum writing, so that they're already aware of that and then say, this is what we're looking for by October, this is what we're looking for by November, in the first evaluation, the second evaluation. It's a lot of work to this, um, piece. Other questions? All right. The next one, uh, next piece I just wanted to talk about was, uh, parent forum. We've decided to have a parent forum on May twenty-first at seven PM at Lounsbury for all parents who are interested in a director of special education position, so that they can come out and voice their opinion. I think it's important to get community input on that. Um, this is a, a recommendation coming from the subcommittee. Uh, so we've put that out, I want to put that out for the community. So it'll be May twenty-first. We do not want to have the whole board there. It would just be three or four board members and then it would be open to the community to discuss that.
Is that the same night as the parent forum for the school?
Yeah.
No, it's the twenty-fourth.
No.
That's the twenty-first.
There was a staff or administrator.
Twenty-first, but it's so was when they're talk- when she's going to talk to the staff, but that's during the day. Yep. Okay. Uh, any questions on that? Special ed committee, no? All right. Um, and then the, uh, last thing was, when we were meeting on Monday evening with the four people doing the RDT, uh, Lori, you passed me something from Lenape Valley on, uh, the packet that they give out to parents. And, um, asked me to take a look at ours. Scott Wallach does a beautiful job and we met and, and there's very little difference between ours and Lenape except that, Lenape's talked about the step-by-step process of the actual testing. So Scott made some adjustments in his letter and packet, and, uh, I will bring that to you during the public meeting if you want to take a look at it. Uh, Scott has been terrific. He turns things around beautifully and, uh, is open to any kind of new ideas that any of our committee members have. So I ju- I, I wanted to give kudos to him, but also to say that he's adjusted the letter.
You know, and I think it's important, right? So that's the packet that goes out. And I just wanted to clarify too, because, um, that should be the packet that goes out in the beginning of the year, right? And it should also go out anytime, should be passed out at any club, right? So the first meeting of the club, that should be passed out as well.
Yep.
Um, and I think that FAQ is really important so that there's real good clarity for the student as well as the parent as to what the process is going to be.
Now, has that packet always gone out or is that new?
It has gone out.
Gone out.
Yep.
But I don't think it's had, it's been as clear, right? I think it's just had the policy attached to it and the list of activities, right? Did you remember?
Right. Well, we can, we can, we can take a look at it next week and, um, I'll show you the changes he made, we'll put them both.
The changes, right, okay.
Okay, so that everybody can see it.
Now, just out of curiosity, is the packet mailed home or is it relying on middle school and high schoolers to bring it home?
My student handed it to me.
The kids bring it home.
Well, we need a digital backpack in the beginning, right?
Oh, okay, digital backpack, good. And does it apply to middle school, obviously high school, but middle school as well, the same packet or is it a different package?
No, no, because that's voluntary.
It's voluntary in the middle school.
Seven and eight is voluntary.
It's not tied to any participation.
If that packet goes out and everything is clearly spelled out and parents are in favor of that process, we may have a bigger yield of students who are involved in seventh and eighth grade. So that's one of the benefits of maybe clarifying the whole process, um, with the letter.
Right.
And the packet. Because the yield wasn't strong this year in seventh and eighth grade.
And the, the regulation around random drug testing pertains to nine through twelve.
Yeah, nine to twelve, middle school, yeah, you can't tie it.
So it's totally voluntary in the middle school.
Thank you.
Great. With your permission, I'll make a couple of recommendations. Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, G one, it is recom- Well, I'm new. G one has recommended that the board approve a two thousand dollar per month stipend for Shannon Flannery in her position as VTHS interim assistant principal.
Can I have a motion for G one, please?
I will move G one.
Ms. LaPera, second?
Second.
Ms. McGee, questions or comments? Roll call vote.
Mr. Higgins?
Yes.
Mrs. LaPera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGee?
Yes.
Dr. Peak?
Yes.
Mr. Swire?
Yes.
Mr. Ananziata?
Yes.
Mrs. Bucheri?
Yes.
Mrs. Coghlan?
Yes.
Mr. Sparta?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. G two, it is recommended that the board approve a new stipend for gifted and talented education.
Motion for two, for G two, please. Ms. LaPera, second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Coghlan, questions or comments?
How many children are in the GATE program now, Dr. McKay?
I think the number is thirty-nine.
That's K through six?
K through six. I'm not sure on that. I can get back to you on that.
Let me take the top, how many percent?
One to two percent. Although in the er- the later class, in other words, the first couple of classes, they're a little bit larger than they are with the younger kids.
Yeah, so I was going to ask, cause I know in kindergarten and first, it's like two out of two hundred.
Yeah, there's a, a bigger number at the, from the beginning, from the outset of the program. We've really worked with the program this year and the parent forum has been terrific. It's been great talking with these parents and, and getting their input as well.
Any other questions? Roll call vote.
Mrs. LaPera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGee?
Yes.
Dr. Peak?
Yes.
Mr. Swire?
Yes.
Mr. Ananziata?
Yes.
Mrs. Bucheri?
Yes.
Mrs. Coghlan?
Yes.
Mr. Higgins?
Yes.
Mr. Sparta?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We've struck G three.
Yeah, we struck G three, so I'm going to go right to the addendum. G four, it is recommended that the board approve the vendor accent on communications LLC. This is a specialized speech language program that is IEP driven for a new student for the remainder of the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year.
Motion for G four, please.
I'll move G four.
Ms. LaPera, second?
Second.
Ms. Bucheri, questions or comments?
So this is a student specific?
Yep, I, from the IEP, yep.
Okay.
Just came, yes, it just came through. Uh, Nancy Schultz told us today, Steve and I met with her just to make sure we were set on this.
So is the student done in our district then as of two thousand eighteen or will return in two thousand nineteen?
No, the student will continue in our district.
So then will we need the same vendor for next year's school year?
Steve, on approval for a vendor, once they're approved, is it tied to the one student or is that enough?
Not at all. Correct, it's not. I mean, so now you've, you will have approved this vendor, there, yes, there's a need uh, because of a particular student's IEP. However, if another student needed this vendor, we wouldn't come to you for approval again.
So the second se- sentence is more of an explanation of why we're going after this.
Correct, right.
So that's my point. Should it be in the resolution? Cause to me, it would almost read that we're just approving this vendor for the end of the seventeen eighteen.
Sure. I can strike the sentence, the second sentence, and we can just, it is recommended the board approve the vendor accent on communications LLC.
And we, just so you're, we did put that because the vendor was questioned, so we felt we would give you slightly more information on why, how this transpired. But ultimately, once you're approving a vendor, if there's another need, um, we would use the vendor. But we'll strike the second sentence.
Well, we just, what? I was going to say, before you completely strike it, maybe just leave in it's a specialized speech language program that is IP driven and then nix out the rest because then it can be applied to anyone.
Yes.
And that way in our notes, we'll always remember what it is.
Right, and then we're specifying, right, that the vendor is specifically IEP driven, right?
All right, so the recommendation is, it's recommended that the board approve a vendor accent on communications LLC. It's a specialized speech and language program that's IEP driven.
Right. So we'll have to get amended a motion on it, but before we do that, is there a cost associated with it?
Yes.
Yes.
How come the cost isn't in your.
I, I don't know the frequency, so, uh, I don't have a cost. I can get that for you.
Well, it'd just be kind of nice to know if it's ten thousand or a hundred thousand.
Yeah, but aren't we just approving the vendor, not the actual product?
Yeah, but if it's driven by an IP then it's going to be used and the question is how much.
Right.
Right. Uh, my assumption would be, I would have to confirm this, but on your public meeting agendas, there's a section under my section where you approve contracts for services. That once we received a contract with a dollar amount, with a frequency, you would then approve the cost. So I can make sure that happens.
So that'll come future.
Okay, yes.
So this is approving the vendor, right?
I can also get that out to you in an update.
Yes.
We'll find out.
I mean, ultimately, it doesn't really matter how much it costs because it's driven by the IP.
Yeah, sorry, it's not budget driven.
But it'd be good just for it to understand.
Yeah, okay.
So I need a motion for the amended recommendation.
I'll move that.
Mr. Swire, second?
I'll second.
Ms. LaPera, questions or comments on the amended? Roll call vote.
Dr. Peak?
Yes.
Mr. Swire?
Yes.
Mr. Ananziata?
Yes.
Mrs. Bucheri?
Yes.
Mrs. Coghlan?
Yes.
Mr. Higgins?
Yes.
Mrs. LaPera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sparta?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
G five, it's recommended that the board approve the following faculty and staff transfers.
Motion for G five, please.
Motion.
Ms. Bucheri, second?
Second.
Ms. LaPera, sec- uh, questions or comments? Roll call vote.
Mr. Swire?
Yes.
Mr. Ananziata?
Yes.
Mrs. Bucheri?
Yes.
Mrs. Coghlan?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Higgins?
Yes.
Mrs. LaPera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGee?
Yes.
Dr. Peak?
Yes.
And Mr. Sparta?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
No, uh, Steve, would you like to rephrase the resolution for the buses for Tuesday and Thursday?
Yes. So, um, it's recommended that the board approve going to bid for four three-thirty bus routes for the eighteen, nineteen school year for Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Can I have a motion for that recommendation?
Motion.
Ms. Bucheri, second?
Second.
Um, Mr. Swire, questions or comments? Roll call or vote?
Just, I'm sorry, excuse me. Okay, Mr. Ananziata?
Yes.
Mrs. Bucheri?
Yes.
Mrs. Coghlan?
Yes.
Mr. Higgins?
Yes.
Mrs. LaPera?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. McGee?
Yes.
Dr. Peak?
Yes.
Mr. Swire?
Yes.
And Mr. Sparta?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
That's it, thank you.
Mr. Kepnis?
Okay. In your packet again for your review is our personnel report. The only change was in the part-time aid category, I believe it was at Glen Meadow. And your enrollment report. So again, looking at this. You're at three thousand eighty-nine, month of May. Out of district is thirty-two tuition students, so three thousand one hundred twenty-one students. Also, uh, we did review, uh, the HIB review or reports, but also in here, uh, for your review is a summary of, of that. Report for April, last month. So any questions on those? We did look at, um, number four. It was suggested, I think it was Lauren, you had suggested that we look at, um, the fifty-five thirties, your substance abuse policy and regulation fifty-five thirty, procedure for handling substance abuse. So what I would ask you to do at your leisure is, those are in your packet. Um, it was suggested that we do align those to the RDT policy in terms of, um, any punitive or, uh, what will take place should there be a student who's under the influence. It is a significantly different process in these policies, um, but take a look at that, um, and we can compare that to see. I don't know that we're going to discuss that now if you've had a chance to look at it, um, but I think it'll be interesting for you to see I don't know that we're, wanna discuss that now, if you've had a chance to look at it, um, but I think it'll be interesting for you to see what, what we call eighteen As, when a student is under the influence.
Well, and I think it's important to, to also bring attention that it's two separate state regulations, right, it's eighteen A and a six A.
Yes.
And they do have very specific differences, they have very specific purposes. Um, one is for eighteen As for offense on school property or during school events versus a random drug testing, um, which falls under the six A. So, um, there will be some differences between the two that will have to be maintained.
Yes.
Um, I, uh, was gonna, I didn't, didn't have time to go look, but I'm gonna go look for eighteen A and, and forward it out to everybody, so I'll find eighteen A. I already sent out, um, the six A sixteen to everybody, so I know it's long, it's a lot of pages, but, um, I think chapter three is specific to random drug testing, so you can take it in substance abuse, you can take a look at that, and then, um, I'll look for eighteen A and get it out to everybody.
There were a couple of parts of this policy that, um, kind of called out to me as I was looking at it and comparing it to RDT. Um, and one of them was the piece that I mentioned for the random drug testing policy, which is the annual review. This policy says that we will review it annually, so this is a good first review of it for this year, um, something that we should look at. So although it is dictated by state law, it also gives us the opportunity to have continued community input, just to make sure that the policy's working for us and that we don't wanna, I don't know, that we don't need to tweak it in some way, you know, add other elements, like this, you know, one of the pieces that we added to RDT, which was the, the formation of a group of, um, like kind of a core counseling group for a student who's, um-
Who's at risk.
Yeah, who's at risk, and that, whether or not the person is involved in extracurriculars should be no difference, right? We, if we have the ability to provide that for someone involved in extracurriculars or parking on campus, then someone who has been, you know, using illegal substances but on school grounds, they may also benefit from that, if we're able to provide that service. So I think that might be worth a conversation. Maybe after everyone has a chance to really fully read RDT and then read through this, we may find other opportunities. Um, there were a couple of like inconsistencies, also the kind of nomenclature for co-curricular versus extracurricular in here.
Yeah.
Um, and since we're cleaning up that other language. Um, and then there was a referral in this one, this one is, again, it's wording, but, um, this refers to disciplinary sanctions in a certain section of the policy that actually doesn't exist, says section B, there's no section B, so.
Yes, let me speak to that. That was missed, yes. There is a typo in there. Um. Very good. I'm impressed.
And then I wondered, um, on number thirteen, I would just like call your attention to this one piece, number thirteen within the policy, or, no, it's in the regulation, sorry. Number thirteen, where we have an exception for anabolic steroid use, and I wondered why, um, in the crafting of this policy, I don't know if any of us were on the board when this poli- when the regulation was crafted, but why anabolic steroids were called out as an exception, and it seemed like there were different, I don't know, procedures followed with someone who's been found to be using those types of controlled substances versus others.
We'll have to look, I mean, that might tie into the sports, the NJSAII, whatever it is.
The sports, right. Okay.
I think that that's-
Well, at this point, it was June ninety-six and, yeah, I guess so.
Yeah, and oh, C I L.
So these haven't been looked at in that time, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's oh eight, right, it was revised, sorry.
I'd like to set up a committee then, to sit down and get some voices in. I'm thinking of, um, uh, d- different people. I mean, obviously, we would have security people in, we would talk about how that works, um, maybe some, um, our SRO would be involved in that discussion, and, um, I, I would certainly want to have our athletic director in on that discussion, so I can think of people that we probably wanna have, uh, looking at this together.
Yeah.
Right, and I think we also need to clarify, right, because in our RDT, we could be, but I don't, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe in our drug kits that we're testing for alcohol.
No.
Alcohol can be tested for alcohol.
But yet this, this specific regulation, y- while there are, I think, three different types of kits that you can use, um, some include alcohol and some do not. So you can test for alcohol use in, in random drug testing as well, um, but the regulation calls out for alcohol, it lumps it all together. So I think we need to clarify if it's only gonna be on school grounds for alcohol use versus random drug testing, or if we're gonna change the random drug testing.
Well, I- Many policies will be changed. Wherever, as a reminder, I'm working with, um, New Jersey school boards and they're converting our policies. So before we go put too much time and energy into revising these, what I would suggest is we get our policies back from them. Um, these, you're right, like, some of these would likely be outdated. Um, this one was back to August two thousand six. So let's, let me reach out to them and get their timing on, uh, when they feel they'll be done. They've been asking me many questions on many policies, so they're doing what they do. Uh, I don't know how long, how much longer they're gonna be though.
Can we get this one, I know they're going methodically through, or probably in order, right, um, but can we at least get their standard, you know?
Yeah.
Policy?
Yep.
Or, or s- uh, s- uh, sorry, standard, yeah, policy and regulation on this?
My guess is, and this is just a guess, that this is the one that they're all scratching their heads about, because vaping, right?
Hmm, yeah.
Is coming in, yes.
Huge, huge.
I had a question about, you know, how they, they define in parentheses, you know, the, the substance, substance abuse, and throughout much of the document, it refers to alcohol and other drugs. So what, you know, what's the point of defining substance and substance abuse if you're just gonna refer to alcohol and drugs throughout the rest of the policy, so.
Right, 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 right. Well, and I think on substance too, it's interesting, it says chemical compounds that release vapors or fumes, right?
A major rewrite.
Including-
Right, but, uh, that's what we're-
Yeah, so.
And then I think the other thing we talked about as a group about that we really need to think about as a board, I would just charge everybody to be really creative about the amnesty section, right? We really want to encourage our students that know they're having a challenge and don't feel like they have a support ways to go, to be able to give them a place where they can go and seek help themselves. We kind of, we talked a little bit about the anonymous tipping, you know, tip line or tip whatever, and we were afraid that that might become more of a bowling ball. So we really weren't sure that that was the right avenue to go, but I think providing students, students and or faculty, a way to be able to express a need for help is really important.
That might be a good place to get more student input. We had one student on that committee, maybe there's a group of students that can give us some input on how we can best.
Best way, right?
Yeah, how we facilitate.
You know, because they need to understand that there won't be any consequences if they can fold on their own. You know, to be able to protect them, I think, you know, this clears over to the fact that it's almost over fourteen and over. I think they maintain their privacy, so parents doesn't even have to be involved. I don't think.
Don.
Yeah, sorry.
I think too, you know, I remarked at Dr. Peake me a few months ago, I think. And I think part of his issue with the RDT policy correctly on wrong is that what are we doing for everybody outside of it? So how can we utilize his policy? Can we put anything in his policy that shows support to the kids when they are referred and have a problem? And I think that's, you know, obviously, I think we want to get to the kids before there's a problem, right? But, you know, this is the, when we know there is a problem, what can we do to give them all the support we need at that point in time? And I don't know if that's something that could be inputted in the policy regulation or not, but I think that's something that needs to be considered. It's not just the process of going through, it's the process after the lawsuit.
Are you referring to the substance abuse policy?
Yeah.
So perhaps should consider something similar to RDT with that creation of a supportive group.
Even the people who were most convinced that they wanted consequences and wanted harsh consequences, there was a compassion for our students, I cannot say that enough. People cared about our kids, everybody there, and every teacher that we taught with, and every professional in this field. It's always a heart thing that you worry about.
Anything else on four?
Okay, number five, what I would like to recommend next week is one of the two security proposals. And I can get you hard copies, I did email them to you, I have a copy here, but there were two. One I received from a company called Group 77, Security and Public Safety Consulting. And then the other one was from Pungaro Training and Management. Actually, Pungaro came in slightly less. Their fee would be sixty-two hundred dollars. They would go from school to school, fashion to classroom. They would inquire with the staff, with our security personnel, they would review policies. Group 77, they broke it down into three phases, ultimately doing similar things, three phases though, and defined how much it would cost per each phase. And they said it would be eighty-seven hundred, however, depending, it could go not to exceed twelve thousand one fifty. I think we're gonna pay more for the group, we will pay more for Group 77. But based on their proposal and their outline, I think it was a much more thorough proposal, and I think you might get a better result. So I would like to recommend a higher cost proposal, but that would be Group 77. So I don't know if anyone had a chance to look it over, comment on the proposals?
No, I didn't.
Okay, yeah. Okay. And again, I'm happy to get your hard copies if you want, I can send them out before next Thursday, if you need a hard copy, okay?
Steve, did we also look, oh, did we also look, I sat through, I've sat through a couple of presentations now, and they just had the one at the school boards at the Sussex County meeting where Sparta presented. And their chief of police mentioned that they did a risk assessment in their district together with, I want to say it was the DOJ, that has a program that's free. They'll come and do the risk assessment, they include your county prosecutor, they include your town police, and they actually come in and do a complete risk assessment. And I believe Sparta used that risk assessment to formulate their security policies and their security measure to be implemented. I may have misunderstood, but I believe that that's available as a service to the school districts, so.
So he'll reach out to Sparta.
Yeah. Just wondered, I think at a recent meeting, someone mentioned, maybe Bill mentioned, that there was a grant that, is there a security grant that we're applying?
Yes, we were just talking about it before, yeah.
So Chuck, yeah, given up that you got that.
All right, so where we are, there's a federal grant out there that has been there for the past three or four years. And it's about security mechanisms. In other words, things that you use, things that have come out of the industry, whether it's cameras or whether it's systems that feed into, say, live bus feeds, things like that. And that has been available for the past four years. As we were applying for that grant, we had a connection from Hitachi, which Bill had developed for us. And Hitachi works with a person who works on in Washington DC. That person indicates this is perfect for you, Hitachi then sends it to us, we then look at it and go, okay. And we didn't have to use Hitachi's equipment, it was just their way of, and good business. And then all heck broke loose because they basically tripled or even quadrupled the amount of money they're putting into this. And they tied it directly to education, and they tied it directly to vocational education and comprehensive high schools like ours. And it's all about safety. So we were waiting for clarification of what that money would look like. I mean, it's national news, everybody's talking about this big money that's out there. So now we've got connections from Hitachi and that person in Washington saying it's now time to start to look at that again. So we're going to do that, the timeframe's changed because it was supposed to be May fifteenth, what date were we supposed?
Yeah, we were.
Something like the map, right? Right, we were trying to get, we were gonna try to get it done. So they've extended that, and they really haven't told us when the exact date is. But this is a way that our district, if we spend some time this summer meeting with those people and getting this grant done, which looks like a lot of work, that we would be able to get money. Now, that's not going to pay for security officers, what that would pay for is more cameras and a more sophisticated connection between the idea of, like I said, live feed from buses. And I don't even understand all of this, but we're gonna apply for it, and we're gonna figure it out.
Yeah, and we'll be coming along after others have done it.
Yes.
Particularly New York State through, they get two billion dollars, there's a mad race on to spend the money in New York State.
Right.
So the person that brought this to us, he's involved in that, so by the time it gets to us, then that history will be behind you.
And I'm really interested in that key piece that we were talking about before, which is that vocational piece. What does that mean? Like, you know, is that vocational schools or is it schools with A C T E programs? And can we tie that with some of our programs, so, yeah.
So we're gathering the forces now and bringing another meeting together?
Right.
And then there was sort of like a softer piece to the security proposals. I don't know where it would come up, if it's in looking closer at policy, but I think that there was a lot of interest expressed by faculty and staff on training, whether it's Alice training or self-defense training, or, I don't know, it could run, right? There are all types of programs, so is that being actively looked into and actually had for sure?
Yes.
Wow.
Great. Now, did you give us, did you give us that? Yes, that's what I thought, okay.
It's August twenty-eighth, it's to train a trainer.
Is that a hack one?
It's at I P, yeah, five ninety-five. It's a two-day training.
Yep, I passed that along to Scott and said, who in our community could go to this? And Scott was talking about, he at first thought this is not for us, and then realized it was, and he's like, okay, well, we can definitely do this. So yes, we are, it's on the radar.
Okay, all right.
And but then, train the trainer means then you turn around and then you do with your staff, right? So we have three days in the beginning of the year, we have the genesis training, we have introductions, time for teachers to work on passing. So maybe it's time to, if someone was interested in that, because you can't, I would have a headache that, but if you're interested in that, we can do some training. And then it would be the kernel of a start of a program.
We could send more than one person.
Scott, we're gonna send more than one person.
Yeah, I said, I hope we're gonna do it.
Yeah, great.
Steve is interested.
Oh, you were, you were there. That's all I have on the security, so let me look into the free. I'll email you what my, what I find on what Sparta utilized. And if that doesn't apply or if it's not what this one is, I would love to be recommending this one. And if you choose to not move forward, that's fine.
My only comment would be, did you check any of the references?
I did not.
I know one of them would, listed a couple of references, and, you know, the Group 77 proposal was much, like you said, much more comprehensive. But, you know, it's worth it to check, check some references. The free is a little better, as long, I mean, as long as it's quality.
As long as it's quality, yeah.
So that's it on the security system. Number six, recommended, the board approved, professional development travel as listed.
Motion for number six, please. Mr. Swire, second, Ms. LaPera, questions or comments? Go full vote.
Mrs. Condon. Mr. Higgins.
Yes.
Mrs. LaPera.
Yes.
Mrs. McGee.
Yes.
Dr. Peake.
Yes.
Mr. Swire.
Yes.
Mr. Renziari.
Yes.
Mr. Sparta.
Yes.
Motion carries. Just so you do know, I did have one change that was personal to me. If you keep the date for your July meeting as it was, I can't attend. So I suggested a change, but again, you don't have to go with that suggestion, it's completely up to you. However, if I, if you are okay with it, I would just suggest we approve these dates for your board meetings next week.
What is it, your fiftieth birthday or something like that? I'm not opposed to changing every day. I want to make it, I did plan to be away at the end of July, and I chose to do that because I assumed the meeting would be the second or third week of the month. But I am just one quarter, so maybe move along.
I'm in the same position as Justin, we planned around meeting date, so.
I'll put it back.
No, I mean, if it's, if it's only.
All right, I'll make sure someone's here to, yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, I'll be fine. So we actually only have a court issue, right? Right there's three. You know, there's nothing else pops up, so I think we're better off to keep it. Let's keep your information light that meeting.
That's combined, right? One in July.
That's gonna be a combined?
Yeah. Natalie, we're gonna keep the meeting the same in July.
So we're in May, July nineteenth, okay?
Is there perhaps a date in July that there's, there aren't board member conflicts or a conflict with Steve attending? Yeah, I mean, maybe there's a compromise here on a different.
I think actually, yeah, I think actually the nineteenth, I don't know, that's the week.
So then you will be on the nineteenth, or?
So maybe.
You don't know, probably you're in.
So is, so is there a week before that we think?
So now what's the week before that?
Is that to ghost?
Two weeks after school, yeah.
It's not supposed to be that way. It's not supposed to be that way.
Before the nineteenth is the twelfth, is the problem. Honestly, I suggest we just keep it as it was originally posted.
Why don't we revisit in the work session in June?
Okay.
All right, and then that way it's closer to, you know, Teresa's not sure she's around, I could find out quickly, but.
So let's do this, I'll keep the same calendar with a suggestion, and if you, if you would, look at your calendars, and all come together in June, and we'll pick a July meeting date.
Maybe could we move to the Wednesday before, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Yeah, it might just be.
So we'll do that in the work session in June. And we, this is a bit late. These decisions did come in from the School Ethics Commission, there was concerns. We sent a request to School Ethics. I hope by now you've seen them. One was in reference to participating on the board and the town land use board. And then the other was in reference to Brad with Sussex Rural Electric, any conflicts? It was determined that no, it's not a conflict to serve on the board and the land use board. You would just, if you were on the land use board, have to abstain. If an issue came up that was an issue between the land use board and the Board of Ed, and with Brad, again, it was suggested that he abstain on the checks as he's doing. And those opinions are in your packets. Are any questions, any questions on that? I do believe that's all I have.
Number nine. We haven't even kind of talked.
Well, we, exactly, we did.
I don't know if anybody.
I don't know if there's any more on the call tricks, more to come after next Friday. We'll be speaking with them over the phone in the brief training, so that's, Brad, that's all I have.
Do we have to do one of those?
We did. We did, a few of the trucks there.
Yes, yep, we did. So tomorrow morning, I'll be working with Jamie, we'll go to bid. It'll be Tuesday to Thursday, four routes on Tuesday, four routes on Thursday. And I will let you know as soon as we have results on the week to the June meeting.
Anybody have anything else for Steve before we move on? With that, I'll open it to the public for items on the agenda or any other business. Anybody have anything? Ms. Lisa?
Hi.
We have five minutes.
Okay, I'll try. I have a question, ooh, see moves. I have a question in regards, actually, to what you guys were talking about as far as policy with student shaming or, and things like that, only because, and I'm speaking today as a parent in regards to my own child in high school. He had an incident this week, and he was pretty much shamed very loudly. His job threatened by an administrator, and I was not happy. He went home, he cried. My son's, he's a big tough cream puff, is like what I like to call him. He used to love school, he came home and told me he wants to quit because he does not feel welcomed anymore. And I have a really hard time with that because it doesn't, all the kids are equal. No matter what they do, they should all be treated the same. They should not be harassed, made to feel bad for anything that they've done, didn't do, why or why not? So I want to know, you know, we have bullying policies for our students against each other. Do we have a policy in place for teachers that bully our students? Or administrators that are bullying our students, or teachers that are bullying other teachers? I mean, I'm just being honest here because this sets this district up for legal, legal situations. Not that I'm taking that aspect, because I'll take the high road. I just, I'm, I am upset about it. And I'm just curious to know if we have those policies, because we are always talking about bullying with our students, bullying each other, but there's never a policy or any type of situation where if a teacher bullies a student, what is the repercussions for that?
Right, right. Usually it's a conduct charge against the teacher. If it was made public and it came to HR or somewhere else, there could be a conduct charge against the teacher. But when you say policy, I'm not sure.
Like, you know how we have like the policy for bullying?
Yes, yes, HIV policy is really defined, but it's not defined in that case with teachers and students. That would be, but I do, I do understand what your concern is.
Because I know some districts, I'm not so sure, like around here, but I've read about it. And a lot of districts are putting the, these more strict policies in place because they are finding themselves in legal issues after the fact. And I'm just thinking that, you know, it protects our stu, our students, our, my child. I feel like, you know, the teachers are protected, the administr, and I'm a teacher too, so, you know, I'm speaking on both ends here. Everybody's protected, but who protects the kids? And I've asked that many times over the past two years that I've been working here and seeing my own kids in the district. I'm, like, who protects them?
Yeah, they're definitely.
P thirty-two eighty-one inappropriate conduct teaching staff members, there's a policy and a regulation.
Right, and it's inappropriate behavior.
Right.
It's conduct, yeah.
But what is, like, what is inappropriate behavior, like, is it defined?
It is, yeah, there had, it talks about, includes but not limited to sexual misconduct, a request by school staff member for people for social relationship, inappropriate language, inappropriate. There's a lot here, it's.
It's a very lengthy policy regulation.
Is that on our site?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there also an investigation in?
There says something about investigation in there.
Yeah, the supervisor, the principal receives a report of a staff member who engaged or may have engaged in conduct prohibited, will immediately notify the superintendent or designate a superintendent, will begin a thorough investigation. There's a process for an investigation.
You'd need to begin the process with the administrator in the building.
And obviously, if that administrator in the building is.
Is the person.
Is the person, and then pass it to the boards.
The board's supporting, yes.
Right.
Okay.
So there is a policy that should be followed.
Yeah, my other question is, when an incident happens at school, does the teacher, is the teacher supposed to write a report also?
For.
Be more specific.
If a teacher, say a teacher walks into a bathroom and sees something, and there's consequence.
In the referral, whoever.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm.
Yeah, in the golden colored paper.
Right, right.
In the referral, whoever is the person who, the adult teacher or staff member, they would write the referral. That referral would then go to the assistant principal, and usually they put details on there. Or they go to the assistant principal, and the assistant principal writes the referral.
Okay, and if there was never a referral written, what, how does that?
Oh, I don't know.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that you're saying there should have been and there wasn't?
Correct. Until after the fact, after I had asked to see.
In my role as acting superintendent, I can sit down with you.
Yeah, I'm just, I just, I'm trying to get some answers, yeah.
So we can look at policy or process.
Okay.
Okay?
I suggest you to search the website for the policy.
I have been, I've been, like, there's so.
If you go, if you go to, if you, if you go, he said it's thirty-five twenty-one somewhere.
Thirty.
If you just go to V T S D dot com, go on to the Board of Ed, you can hit the policy regulations.
Yeah, I know, there's a bunch of.
Conduct on becoming or staff, yeah, staff misconduct, it'll bring up.
Thirty-two eighty-one.
Thirty-two eighty-one.
Inappropriate conduct teaching staff members, that's the policy. And then the regulation is R thirty-two eighty-one, so P and R thirty-two eighty-one.
So we have a lot going on tomorrow, but I can meet early.
Tomorrow, my daughter's having her wisdom, I have this date, yeah. So I had this date taken.
Do you want to, Monday?
Monday will be good, yeah.
Yeah, good. Just contact me at one time.
Yeah, I will, I actually received your email, I just didn't get to change it. Um, but I wanted to comment also before, I don't know if it's allowed, but when you were talking about putting in lesson plans for the special ed.
Yes.
You know, I'm in the class down for the NJ DOE, and they are gonna have another assessment.
Yes.
Because they just taught us how to do all this in that particular class.
That was part of it, right?
Oh.
Yeah.
And you are dead right, it's so much work, and every lesson plan now that the teacher creates must have specifics to each I E P in that class, it's gonna be crazy.
Right, and think about when you're trying to differentiate with your cousin telling you.
Oh, I, yeah.
Sure.
Mm-hmm, so, yeah, but they're gonna have their own assessment too.
We're gonna make it through.
I know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing no one oppose it to the public? Go to J, open board member forum, anything, anybody have anything they want to share?
I have one quick thing. We have reached an agreement in principle with the Administrative Association, so we're gonna formalize the MOA, and we should be good to go with that.
We will go in a closed session to report two items.
Now, tonight?
Yeah, after we'll work on it for all, we'll take action on those, like, we don't take action until next week. So I just want to let the public know that, I should have said that before, I apologize.
I might add something too.
Yeah.
I went to the Glenn Meadow production of Annie, and it was amazing. So just wanted to say kudos to all the students, the faculty and staff, it really was a really nice production, kids that had it.
And if you want to see a picture of the production, I don't have video, I'm still trying to get, figure out in earpods, but in the podcast, the last podcast, we had five pictures from the production. Kids are fat.
Yeah, they were, they were miserable, they really did, so, you could just tell that, how much they enjoyed it, the hard work they put in, and.
That show at the middle school level is relatively new, I think this is the third year.
Amazing, yeah.
And Annie really, I mean, for a production in an all-purpose room?
Oh, yeah, and I mean, even right down to the stage room, you could see all the kids working, they all have a job to do. The set was beautiful, it's beautiful, in middle school, really was nice, so.
Who goes to Miss Cinemine, and, you know, all that went on with the sets and, and the group.
Yeah, and the really good.
I had an issue, Steve and I had been talking about it in Chuck too. A question had come up about, it was on social media, about allowing homeschoolers to participate in extracurricular activities. And, and I thought Vernon District allowed that, but it doesn't appear that there's any type of policy addressing.
Actually, I think it's addressed through NJISA, I think that's where it's addressed. Because I remember having this conversation years ago.
We voted on this.
Did we?
Yeah, I was on the board, and we voted because a local school district was not allowing it.
Right.
So then somehow it came up topic for us, and we all voted.
To allow it.
To allow it.
I thought we allowed it.
So, okay, so that was the question, but then Steve and I had discussion about RDT or medical release and stuff, so.
Yeah, and I was like, well, I'll get to that one.
But it's, but so there's not a policy?
Or something as simple as a student, homeschool student might have a peanut allergy, comes to join the team, we don't know about it, gets on the bus and has a reaction, so there should be, if we do, I think.
There needs to be the same medical release required, the same RDT release.
You know, all the same. Well, do you put them in RDT though, if they're not?
There aren't, that's the policy.
I'll give you an example.
We don't have a policy on that.
I'll give you an example, my son attends Sussex Tech, but he wrestles for Vernon, and I signed the RDT form because he was participating in it, so he was not a student in this district at all.
So what if his number got called?
And he would have had to pan a cup.
But Sussex Tech doesn't have it.
No, they wouldn't, I, well, I guess they would have to call him when he was here, when he was, when he showed up for practice.
Someone's going to school.
You're still doing school hours.
I think that was part of the conversation we had that day.
Yeah, because I remember somehow with Honey Mop, and we unanimously, if I'm correct, voted that yes, the student could be, you know, participate.
Which I thought so too, yeah.
Yes, because the families are taxpayers. But then I don't recall delving into all of these.
So we need to kind of talk about those issues.
I think Scott could be able to do a test.
I think we need to talk about those issues though, because there needs to be a policy that's still consistent.
Steve, can you, can you look back in two thousand and sixteen, uh, no, no, yeah, two thousand and sixteen, it was.
It was, it was.
It definitely has to be in the meat, in the minutes of the meeting.
Yeah, we all.
Yeah, no, I think you did, because I remember the other district saying no, but I think there needs to be some policy regarding the medical release, regarding how we handle RDT.
Something on that.
Yes, some guys, yes. Yeah, there needs to be.
That, that is a reminder. Mr. Edelman drafted a, a, a thorough policy that he was using. He shared it with NJISAA. They did adopt his policy and I, since you asked, I reviewed that, it happened, I reviewed it. It says a district may allow. So, it didn't really say does allow or, or does not allow.
It was driven by his policy.
It was, and he kind of, kind of unilaterally wasn't allowing it. And then it came to my attention and that's when we had the conversation.
Well, there was, I guess, a misunderstanding in the community that Vernon does not allow.
Yeah, and we, we do, that's.
I know, we do, yeah, but there was just recently, within the past week, you know, and that kind of scored the conversation.
We gotta firm it up, we're not asked a lot, obviously, otherwise I'd have a better answer.
Yeah, no, I think, I think we need some kind of clarification.
Share some guidance so families know. Everybody on board.
I think if we gave a packet out, I can't, I can't speak for Scott, but I really think that we would be a shared background.
Anybody have anything else? Um, Brad, a few months ago, we discussed forming an official policy committee. I know I. You, you and I had this debate and, and if you needed a chairperson for it, I offered to do that, but I don't think we ever had others come forward. No, exactly, I, I think that's something that is definitely, that's needed to cover these tougher policies and, you know, I think I've stated before that a statutory, we have a policy committee, you know, we meet quarterly, we actually have it in our bylaws that we have to review each policy every five years at the minimum, so it's a rule like that. And I, I think what you guys did with the RDT is a perfect example of how a policy committee works and functions. You know, policy is, yes, policy by the board, but if we're nine of us to sit around this table and discuss a policy when we would and we have discussed it, it was, we never got to a conclusion. So, perfect example that it does work. So I think that's something that we should do. I think that's, uh, there should be a subcommittee on our, on our website. And if you want a chair, that's fine. If anybody else is welcome to, to the forum, I think it's a worthy.
I'd suggest that it should be a rotating committee because it is a, it's a time commitment and then there's also kind of like an interest.
Sure.
Level, not that all the policies are fascinating, but some.
Well, we can, we can do that for policy, yeah, that's fine, really, that's fine.
Yeah, I would say it's like policy needs to be.
That's a good one.
For an hour, right, at that point, you'll get into support numbers.
Yep. Yeah. Interesting moving forward, this model is effective, so.
Absolutely.
Well, this is something that some of us have wanted for a long time, but the previous composition of the board over the years was very resistant to having a subgroup even research anything, because there was this worry about decisions would be made and so it's nice to have this ability to properly function with a policy.
For a board to operate efficiently, it needs to operate by committee. And as you can see, I mean, we made no decisions, we've come up with a recommendation.
Exactly. Exactly. But just so, in case you wonder why we didn't do that previously, there was a lot of resistance and over the last eight years. There wasn't a majority of board members who felt we could do that. And there are now.
Anybody have anything else? I just have a couple of quick things. I want to congratulate some of our sports programs from the spring. Uh, the softball team last week won, I think it was in the semifinals of HWS. On a squeezed bunt play in the bottom of the ninth inning. I mean, the video that was, I think from Mugs Media was pretty cool and hot. Uh, the baseball team is extremely young and they've been, I think they started out one and five and I think now are eleven and six.
Big win and High Point.
Yeah, and, and they got waxed by High Point.
Big. They, they were ten runs.
Yeah, exactly.
And then they won.
And they're extremely young.
And the softball team's playing on Saturday in the final seven field trip.
Yeah, yeah. And, a star pitcher, right? And the golf team made the states as well, which is always pleasant. Anybody have anything else? With that, I'll take a motion to go in closed session. This one should be pretty quickly. Ms. LaPera, second.
Second.
Ms. McGee, all in favor? I, I. Well, we will not be taking action when we come back after, so there's no reading for you guys to say unless you want to.